The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, including the addendum items two C and seven and eight under other Board of Education.
So move David seconded.
Mrs. Weber.
Mr. Evans.
I.
Mr. Ballant.
I.
Mr. Comerford.
I.
Mr. Mercurio.
I.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved. Seconded.
Any comments or corrections, changes?
That was Mr. Ballant.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio.
I.
Mr. Ballant.
I.
Mr. Evans.
I.
Mrs. Weiss.
I.
And Mr. Comerford.
I.
And Mrs. Weber, would you please go over the overview of the protocol for our meeting?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Welcome everyone out in our virtual world this evening. Thank you for joining us. For those of you who are joining us virtually and would like to have a copy of our agenda, it is available on our website at sycamoreschools.org in the Board of Education area. You can see not only the agenda for this meeting, but also agendas and minutes for past meetings. And once minutes are approved, they are also posted to that page. This evening, we have our two moderators, Mr. Chad Lewis and Mr. Bill Fritz, who will be monitoring the chat feature of the meeting. We ask that you only use the chat feature if you are having technical difficulties, if you're having problems with sound, and just need to make us aware of any of those issues out there. If you do have questions about that you would like to be sent to the board, you can either send those to me at whether we at sycamoreschools.org and we'll get back with you after the meeting. You can also send questions that you may have to our two moderators and they will get those to us as well for response after the meeting. And I did not receive anything from anyone for resident participation prior to the meeting. So we don't know that we have any requests.
Okay, Mr. Fritz, do we have any? No. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Okay, moving along to the superintendent's agenda, Mr. Forstoppel.
This is Weiss. Thank you. I appreciate that. As been our custom, we'd like to give a healthy A's update. It'll be brief and there'll be no slides related to that.
Sure.
Oh, we have that. Okay. So I just want to talk for a moment about the work that's been done over the last several weeks as we've approached somewhat of a milestone and that includes providing vaccinations for our staff. As the board knows and the community knows, we have partnered with a tried and true health partner in Try Health to partner with us to make sure that those staff that were interested have a way to get a vaccine. And as you know, the board has received all the communications. We've worked incredibly hard and special thanks to Mrs. Spencer, Mrs. Weber, Miss Bondbride for all the work that they've done. And so this past weekend, we had our tier one staff members receive their first shot. That was upwards of over 400 staff members that received their shot. Feedback that I've gotten not only from Try Health, but from other parties, specifically those that were in attendance and had their vaccine, that the Try Health process was very efficient, accommodating for our staff, which is what we want to do. And it needs to be noted that when a staff member receives their first vaccine shot, they're automatically scheduled for their second one. And for us, it's the Pfizer and it's a three week out, 21 day out. So that's a good thing. So this weekend, the remaining staff upwards 300 plus staff will get their second dose or first dose and then schedule theirs for 21 days out. So one of the things that the superintendent I'm thinking about as we lean towards or lean forward to that tier one, those are the people that got their shot this past weekend, get the second vaccine or the second dose is what we're hearing both from our medical professionals and from people that have actually had it is that there's the potential for some increased side effects as a result of that second vaccine. So what then does that mean then for that Monday? Remember now the second dose for tier one is our six and seven Saturday, Sunday. And then we are in school on March 8th. Okay. So what I need to start thinking about is could there be a potential impact to our staff on that Monday following that second dose? And then what impact obviously that our core mission is what that could have on the instruction of our students. So the options around that are we have school as normal. If we don't believe there's going to be any significant impact, we think about a remote day or declare a calamity day depending upon what we think could be the impact. So one of the things throughout this whole process, I've not pretended to be a medical expert nor never will be. So I'm starting to consult with the Try Health doctors to get some data on what they think would be the potential impact to our staff on that Monday, 12, 24 hours after that. And then I have to start thinking about what we may need to do as a school district because the last thing we want to do is open school. We don't have enough staff for our schools. That would not be the right thing to do. So we'd like to get ahead of that if possible. I don't know where I'm going to land because I don't have all the information yet. But the people that are going to give me the information are, you know, are the medical professional. Try Health has their whole staff has already been vaccinated. So they've got data that shows what the impact has been for them. So I've asked them for that and I hope we have that at some point in time. So more information, you know, whatever decision is made, we'll do it in the interest of the health and safety and efficient operation of our schools and do it in the right way. So again, I want the community to know, we feel privileged and honored to be part of this vaccine process. Certainly our staff and our teachers and our bus drivers and our EAs and the students that are in the buildings every day deserve this level of protection for their health and we're honored to be able to provide that to them. And from all intents and purposes, after we got through the scheduling process, first blush of it this past weekend, it went really good. So I welcome any questions about that, but that's all the update I have to this point.
Mr. Forstoppel, I'll just echo that I've talked to several teachers and bus drivers who echo the same comments that you made of how efficient the process was, how well it went over. And we're very thankful for all the work that you have done and your staff has done to get those vaccinations. So thank you. Could you just remind us of approximately what percentage of our staff is getting vaccinated?
Yeah, it was about eighty-five, eighty-six percent of our staff.
That's great.
And I do need to publicly thank Try Health, not that anybody from Try Health is listening, but I think we can get it in the minutes anyway. But they have been incredibly responsive to us as the leadership team and individual with the staff. When there's been a scheduling issue, we're working through some some scheduling now where we have certain people can't, were scheduled but couldn't get it because they were quarantined or COVID and you know, some of our staff that are pregnant, you know, based on advice of their physician couldn't get it. They have communicated to me that they will individually reach out to every one of those people and make that work for them at some point in time. So that's a good effort. And I think that gives me a little comfort as to why we try not to do this.
Mr. Forstoppel, I would also like to give a big thank you to Haley Rust in my department because she was really instrumental in pulling all the data together on all of our, all of our staff that Try Health needed to be able to set up the scheduling. You know, so she did a great job in helping us take that list of those people who wanted the vaccination and combining it with everything we had in payroll and getting it into the format that Try Health needed. And so I'd really love to thank Haley as well for her work on that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'll, you know, we certainly, we make the best decisions we can here, but we need input from other people to help us make those decisions. So members of the Teachers' Association and the OC were continually, as they heard things that we need to really address from a communication standpoint, we tried to be as responsive and accommodate as we could to make sure everyone had the most latest and the latest information or make sure this process went well. So, all good.
Thank you, Mr. Forstoppel. And you know, just to echo Mr. Ballant's comments, I mean, I think it's a testament to your team and just the organization that they brought to this and then the partnership that we have with Try Health and moving this forward. And thank you to all of our staff who are taking in these vaccinations. That's very important. And we thank you as a board.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
All right.
Ready for the next one, sir? Okay. I am absolutely thrilled, excited, over the moon, whatever you want to call it, to make two really what I think are impactful announcements tonight. So I'd like to kind of go back in history just a little bit if I can. In April of 2019, before we came to this community and requested a bond issue from them, the Board of Education committed as part of that resolution to only move forward with the construction of a stadium on the campus of Sycamore High School until a minimum of $2.5 million was raised privately. I thought that was a great, a great commitment and showed good fiscal stewardships to our community. So again, as we, as we fast forward from that April to November, and we were so humbled and blessed by the community that showed that they showed their trust in us and gave us approval for a bond issue, our team began thinking about, you know, what is that fundraising or lack of the term capital campaign look like to reach that threshold? And we had an ultimate goal of holding a more broad-based community campaign. We had it all mapped out. We had a plan. We had a title, always an aviator campaign, and we were ready to go. Well, then March 12th came and everything kind of shut down. And so we had to, for very good reasons, being sensitive to the community, being sensitive to the impact of the COVID virus on our, our community, we paused that, which was the right thing to do at that time. But however, even though we paused the more broader campaign, we continued with some more targeted conversations with some interested people that we have relationships built with and then already at least expressed a little interest in helping us reach that threshold. And it's my, it's my absolute honor tonight that as a result of some of those private conversations, understand, of course, we have not done the broad-based campaign yet, that we have reached that $2.5 million threshold. We've attained it. And so I need the community to know that we've stood by what we said we would do and we've reached that $2.5 million threshold. So a couple of things that I want to call out, most of which are thank yous. And I've given you kind of just a bucket of where some of those donations are coming from. You will notice that we have a very tumbling gift of 1.75 million from an anonymous donor. Our boosters, our athletic boosters, as always, have been incredibly, incredibly supportive and have committed $250,000 to this project. Mark Seeger and his family, equal amount. And you're going to learn a little bit more about Mr. Seeger in just a moment when I, when I announce the other home run announcement. And then the last two, we have a variety of people within a couple of groups. We've got a specific alumni group that's putting together some donations and understand, of course, that's where it stands right now. Okay. Doesn't mean that's where it's going to end. There's a real good possibility that in both of these, once we continue and we think the timing is right, both of those numbers will go north as well, which is a good thing. So we reached our threshold. We're excited about that. Understand, of course, that we are still monitoring when we think the timing is right to engage the broader community in this. Again, you've heard me say this frequently, that we want to be sensitive to our community before we do this. And I hope the community will put their trust in me to know when that time is right. And then we'll start to think about the timing for that moving forward. In terms of the actual timeline for the stadium, we're aiming for an open of August of 2022. We're going to have to do something maybe a little differently for this coming season. And Mr. Harden is working on a plan to make sure that that, that is, it comes to fruition. So I will pause with that. Any questions or comments from the board related to that one before I move on.
I think it's a great job really to tie out that commitment we had to the community for raise 2.5. You definitely got ahead of the game, put together a robust plan of community support to get this started. And I know that's not the end of it, but it's been really a great shot out of the gate to get to where we are.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Forstoppel, and you, Mr. Harden, and everyone involved from the district to bring this day to us. This is, as you said, really a hallmark of the community support that we have here at Sycamore. And it doesn't happen by chance. It's cultivating relationships over time and people feeling proud of the district that they're in.
Yeah, I would agree with all those comments and I, you know, I want to publicly thank on behalf of the board, all those people listed up there. 1.75 million dollars is a tremendous gift to bestow on the district. So to our anonymous donor and their family, thank you very much. And to the Seegers as well as the other groups there as well. We couldn't do this without the support of community members like them. And it's greatly appreciated by the board and by the community. So thank you very much.
I would just add to you, I, we set up the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, always an aviator fund, and we have already received half a million dollars in contributions to that fund. So that's, that's great news. So not only have they pledged it, they've already started to, to forward those funds to the district. So that has also been a really successful partnership. And I think one has been valued by those donors who are contributing to this, to the project.
Okay. So thank you, board. I appreciate you acknowledging and affirming the work of those great people, some of which are not named, listed up on the board screen. That's awesome. So my next announcement, let me build a little context around that one. So as we were having these conversations and even prior to when we started some of these conversations around private funding, we interacted with and began conversations with a truly a staple in our community, Mark Seeger, who happens to be a 1979 graduate of Sycamore High School and has blessed the Sycamore family with two sons, Jonathan, a 13 graduate, and Christopher, a 16 graduate. And certainly the boss of the family and his wife, Sandra. They're just an amazing Sycamore family. And Mark had a dream of really enhancing the pool at Sycamore High School. It went through several iterations and really we had long-going conversations about what that might look like and what potentially his financial contribution or gift could be to that as it relates to not only the enhancement of our pool related to the swimming program, but the enhancement around water polo as well. Strong, the Seeger family are strong supporters of both of those programs. So as a result of that, and after multiple, multiple conversations, it is my honor tonight to announce that the Seeger family is gifting the district $3 million towards renovation of what will be titled the Seeger Family Natory. That's an amazing and humbling gift and donation to the community. And when I say humble, I think that speaks volumes to the Seeger family themselves. They are a humble and giving family and we are, we are so grateful for what they're willing to do for us to enhance our existing pool at Sycamore High School. So the community may want to know what exactly might that look like once it gets going and once the renovation at the high school along with the pool renovation would look like. But before I do that, you will see the Seeger family there, Mark and his wife Sandra, and Christopher and Jonathan there. Interestingly enough in that picture, we have a Buckeye shirt and a Michigan shirt. I'm not sure what that's all about. I do know what that's about. But if the Seegers are on there, I hopefully they're chugging. So, so let's give just a snapshot of what we're looking at in the vision for what the renovated pool at Sycamore High School will look like. There's a, there's another picture following this, but basically the components will be on the current pool site. We will increase the pool from a six lane to an eight lane pool. We will include a one meter and three meter diving. We will have a depth that accommodates water polo as well. And here's part of the home run vision for Mr. Seeger and his family. Seating will accommodate over 400 spectators. And that in and of itself really puts us heading above what other pools are in the area. So you can kind of see the schematic of it here. We have been working with SHP and our design team to make sure that how this is going to fit in the existing renovation. We are thrilled with it. But the, the community may want to know, what does it really look like other than a schematic drawing? So let me show you that as well. Here's the initial rendering of what the pool will look like. And we are excited. You will notice that if you go to the top, kind of the top corner where there's some people standing, if you will remember the designs of the renovation of the high school and the new entryway where the athletic entrance is now, you will see that that's where that entrance will be. The pool will be right off that mark if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, yeah.
So we're excited about that. You can see the enhanced, the enhanced seating spectators will come from the upper level into their spectators, which will protect the swimmers and coaches on the pool deck and kind of keep that separate. And this is an exciting, exciting opportunity for the Sycamore High School and for the swimming and the water polo program. It's just a great day to be an aviator. So Mark, anything, Mr. Harden, our athletic director, anything you want to share?
No, I think I would just echo what, what you said, Frank. I mean, it's, you know, this is, it's, it's, it's really the culmination of, of like Mr. Comerford said, just the building of really some special relationships with all those folks, even going back to the stadium. But it has been an honor over the last couple of years to work with the Seeger family and, and some, you know, a family who's just so interested in giving back into this community and has, this is a real passion project for them, just as it is for, for me. So it's, it's, it's been an honor to work with them and to continue to work with them. And we're just obviously beyond grateful to take the opportunity to just have what I think will be one of the premier high school pools in the area and a broad area, you know, like, like you said, just the ability now to, to, if we think about where the pool is, as far as spectators are concerned, to be able to have, you know, every member of your family and friends to comfortably come and watch, watch them eat, to be able to host some larger things that we really haven't been able to accommodate before. I just am beyond grateful to Mark and Sandra and the boys for giving me the opportunity to work with them over the last couple of years. It is, I'm very grateful. It's a, it's a great day. It's a great day.
So I am assuming in Zoom world, the Seegers are out there somewhere. I hope they're, they're tuned in, but I'm not going to put them on the spot. But from the superintendent and the Board of Education and the Athletic Department and the community at Sycamore High School to all the Seeger family, we want to extend our heartfelt thanks, appreciation, gratitude for this generous gift. And we will get it right. We'll get your vision right as we move forward. So that's, any comments from the board?
Let me just say, I mean, it's just amazing. And thank you so much to the Seeger family for their generosity and their vision and their commitment to Sycamore. And, and we, the board is just, is grateful and so appreciative of your donation. Thank you so much. Does anyone else want to?
Yeah, I would just, you know, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Seeger, Seeger on multiple occasions and he truly cares about the school district and his vision, what we can do, you know, what the school district can become. And so, you know, on behalf of the board, I also would like to thank him and his family for everything that they have done and are doing for our district. And it's an honor to have such outstanding members in our community who continue to support Sycamore, even though they've, you know, they've graduated, their kids have graduated, but they still give back to the community for our future aviators. So on behalf of myself, the board and all the aviators and future aviators, I would like to say thank you.
Yeah, to the Seegers, you know, great neighbors, great community members, great aviators. I know when I see you and talk to you, you're always engaged in what's going on with the school. And this is just one more indication over and above of how much you guys care about the school, what it's meant to you and what it's going to mean to everyone else in the future. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Great day. Just a really great day. So just to put a kind of a bow on this for now, we have written a public press statement that we will release announcing these two milestones. And so the community can have some flavor of what we talked about for those that weren't with us tonight. And we're going to continue with our work. We're going to continue to be mindful of when our next outreach to the broader community might be around this. And so we'll keep the board updated as we move forward. So I appreciate everybody's interest and enthusiasm for this this evening.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Forstoppel. Okay, master facility plan update.
Okay, I will turn this over to Mr. Lewis.
Sorry.
It's in a pretty, it's a pretty exciting opportunity to follow up after, you know, adding some additional scope to our master facility planning process with this great donation from the Seeger family. The one thing I would say to other interested donors and other interested people that want to join in on the project that are out there in Zoom world, I'm sure Mr. Harden will take your call because he is excited about, you know, helping finish off that commitment that, you know, we, we need to finish that project. So thank you again to Mr. Seeger for getting us going on that endeavor. From a, from a master facility planning standpoint, our high school, if you have not been there recently, you know, it's really been transformed in a very short period of time. There are temporary classrooms being built. They were originally slated to be finished towards the end of March. I am happy to report from a scheduling standpoint, they will actually be finished before spring break. So we will be able to move teachers, move office staff, administration, counseling staff to their temporary homes. And we're actually going to be able to turn over eight classrooms to begin renovations earlier than expected. They were not expected to be started until sometime in May. So now we are going to get started right after or during spring break, once the moves are complete. So again, I never like to say we're ahead of schedule. So I'll just say we're on schedule with a cushion. And those moves, again, I have to mention that the counseling staff and the administration and the office staff are going to be moving to temporary homes for the next, you know, two plus years of the construction process. So, you know, a big thank you to Mr. Mater and his team for, you know, leading by example and being able to, you know, feel good about being displaced for the greater good of the building. Because, you know, not a lot of people would make that sacrifice. And he and his team have done it by example and they're going to, they're going to be in temporary homes. So the next time you go in to find them, it may be looking a lot different where you find them. They may be on mobile desks in the hallway for all you know. So we're impressed with our general contractor, HGC, who has been working hard to get everything completed. And, and again, they're doing so in such an efficient and effective manner. We're, we're very pleased. The high school stadium project, just a couple of quick points about that. We are working towards a planning commission meeting where we will seek out some approvals from the city of Montgomery. So obviously with the announcement tonight, tonight that we've met our goal, we feel confident that we can move forward with the planning around that. And really the big approval is just how much parking we're going to need to have on the facility site. Will they approve the concept plan for the facility? And then there's some impervious surface requirements from a zoning perspective that we have to deal with. But again, we've had great conversations with the city of Montgomery. We're being very responsive and receptive to where we're locating it on the high school facility and the high school site and making sure that we're cognizant of the neighbors that are across the street and really making sure that it's, as, as it always has been slotted really near the highway and up against the highway, which might open up some marketing opportunities, some, you know, visibility opportunities for partnerships. So Mr. Harden always is thinking two steps ahead on those types of ventures. So we will report back, our planning commission meeting with the city of Montgomery is March 1st. So we will report back after that meeting at an upcoming meeting to let you know where we stand with that. Just we, as the board has challenged us to continue to look at alternative sites for the relocation of our bus compound, we have centered We have centered on a potential site. And, you know, again, we are working through the typical process. We're looking at all the costs associated with it. We're looking at all the challenges with the property. We're looking at the potential for site utilities and site clearing. Once we get that information and feel confident in working through the zoning process and making sure that it's zoned correctly from Sycamore Township and the intended use for our property, we will report back and give you more information and but I know the challenge that we are up against is schedule. And that has not lost on us that we are still on a time crunch because we really realistically, by the end of 2021, we need the bus compound out of the junior high site so that we can move forward with the remainder of the construction on that site. Sims Elementary, just, you know, again, H G C is also the contractor that we're working with at that site. It is just so impressive to watch them work and to see all the things that they have gotten done. We are nearly out of the ground. Steel should start to show up if it hasn't already this week. Again, just the progress that they're making on the new wing is pretty incredible. We are working to identify some assistance with commercial moving companies. We've interviewed and talked to three different companies to give us some pricing. Because one of the things that we're going to be challenged to do is within a couple of days of school being out, we're, we're going to need to vacate every room in the building. And that's how aggressive their schedule is. They're going to tackle most of the above ceiling and moving of walls and knocking down of walls during the summer and then be able to put most everything back or at least put it together for school to be in session while they're renovating a couple of wings at a time throughout the school year. So the phasing in the site logistics and the safety are paramount, and we'll make sure that we're doing it the right way. But just wanted to let you know that things are progressing well. We have a great phasing plan and Mrs. Ralston and her team out at Sims have been extremely accommodating working with our construction team and making sure that we get things lined up for the rest of the year. E H Green and the junior high, I have a well, let's start with the E H Green and the junior high on the bidding process. Bids were going to be due this Friday. That was an addendum or a change from our original schedule. We were going to have them do on February 11th, but we started to get some requests for extension because there are several contractors, several large general contractors that would like to bid both jobs. And usually, one job like this would take about a month to bid. So trying to bid two of them in a month is is extremely difficult. With the weather and some of the concerns, we did go ahead and grant another extension. We are granting the extension to next Friday. Again, the 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 reason for the extension, we want to ensure that these contractors have enough time to get the pricing right. And that's what we care about from a school district standpoint, because from if they don't know a price, they'll throw a general number at it, and we will end up paying more for some of the costs. So if there are concerns or, and I would say next Friday is likely the last extension, but that will have given them five plus weeks to be able to get their bids in. And I think at that point, we will feel good that the numbers we have are honed in and hopefully getting us the best pricing that we can get with the market that we have seen. So again, that's being moved to next Friday. And I will report back as soon as we get bids. I should be prepared hopefully for the March 10th meeting unless something is really off track. We are hoping that by March 10th, we'll be able to bring you some bids for approval. The other note that I just got before the meeting is Sycamore Junior High was approved tonight by the city of Montgomery City Council. So we are so appreciative of their support and the city council essentially approves the recommendation of the planning commission. So I can say from a school district standpoint and from my standpoint, working with Mrs. Hanau and Mr. Riblet and the folks over at the city, I can only just say we appreciate their partnership and their engagement throughout the process because these approval processes are detailed and really take a lot of work. I'd also like to thank our team from S H P and Clinagers Group who prepared numerous documents and spent numerous hours preparing for those meetings. And we really got through all the appeal or all the approval process really with minimal change and minimal additional cost. So again, really appreciate all the residents and all the people that have participated in the process. And you know, we, we are going to uphold our commitment to make sure we deliver two fantastic projects at E H Green and Junior High, and it'll be a significant change. And I believe a significant upgrade for the city of Montgomery and the city of Blue Ash. So happy to answer any questions. Apologize for the lengthy update, but as you know, when you're, when you're doing a hundred and twenty seven and a half million dollars, there's a lot to report on.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Yeah, there's a lot of things going on in our district. Does anyone have any questions? Any specific questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Forstoppel.
I do have one announcement. This is, we're kind of in the the good news era tonight. So if you'll remember, we had the honor of announcing 22 of our high school students were national merit semifinalists. That's a big deal. And, and you know, I won't review all that, but basically, those great students scored in the top 1% of the P S A T nationally. Though those 22 national merit semifinalists are then submitted for consideration to become a national merit finalist. It's my honor to announce that all 22 of them are now national merit finalists. And, you know, they are now part of a unique and special group of 16,000 students from across the country. And it now placed them in position to receive scholarship awards, which potentially could be announced later this spring. So in order to put name to number, I'd like to go ahead and just read those students' names again. I know we saw them in in the fall, and they were all up on the screen doing great stuff that they do, but I just thought I'd go down the list and just honor these great students and by their name. And I checked with the high school principal. We gave him permission to release. Sometimes the merit scholarship group is careful about that, but that's, we're okay with that. So those students are Reagan Becker, Scott Brown, Grant Carter, Noah Ditterman, Serena Huberty, Jacob Isaacson, Arun Kamath, Niyadi Kachan, Hunter Kurtz, Adidi Malay, Alicia Low, Alex Ma, Panathi Madala, Nora Peck, Tanakia Pandaya, Matthew Rhines, Adam Rohr, Aiden Schmeling, Arusha Sharmi, Wehan Shi, Rishi Burma, and Gray Shang. Congratulations to those amazing students. We'll certainly get and insert that into the, into the minutes. So good news story for those great students in our high school. So this is why, so that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Forstoppel.
Mr. Forstoppel, yeah, one quick question.
Yep.
Will we be communicating that to the community?
Yes, we will. I'll work with this. I'll write it down. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, I need a motion to approve the treasurer's consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Weber.
Not a lot to point out this month. I will note that there is a, an increase in appropriations of a little bit over a million dollars. That's tied back to the work that is being done at the high school with the temporary classrooms that Mr. Lewis talked about during his update. Next month, you'll see much larger numbers because we'll be adding the budget for not only the additional renovations to Sims, but also the the budgets for the junior high in Green as well. So those will both appear on on the treasurer's consent agendas in addition to the appropriations for the construction cost of those projects.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comenford.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio. Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
And Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the January 2021 final report.
So move.
Second.
Just a couple of things to point out. One of the things that we're tracking in this time is real estate receipts, and you can see that they're down a little bit from last year as of the, at the end of January. I will tell you, though, that in February, we've already received more in February than what we we did in all of February last year. We should probably still have one more advance from the county auditor. So once we get through February, we'll be able to see whether there there might be increased delinquencies because of of the pandemic. We're struggling, but we've seen significant bounce back in in the month of February and collections. We have discussed that the state has reinstated some of the cuts in our state foundation monies. I would point out that that hasn't occurred yet. We'll start to see those come back beginning in the or at least the reduction not being quite as big from last year, beginning in February. One of the other items that we've discussed at a past meeting is that the state has is is going to distribute and work with us on about 1.3 million dollars in additional COVID relief funds from the feds. We have been informed that that application will be out probably this week. And our intent is to submit an application to to utilize those funds to pay for those services. We've already been able to secure that we've already paid with our general fund reserves for this year. So that was, that was good news to hear that we're going to be able to to offset some of that cost from our general fund with federal monies. So so far, we've spent almost $2 million in general fund reserves for COVID-related efforts. So being able to get back some of those funds and and really will likely more use those for those continuing costs that we're going to see through the continue, through the rest of the school year. So that is all I have.
Any questions from the board? All right, Mrs. Weber, thank you. And please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
And Mr. Comenford.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda. And just as a reminder, there is an addendum to item 2 C.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Comenford.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. Onto the other Board of Education business legislative liaison court, Mr. Mercurio.
Yeah, I do have three things. So I apologize for the length. First one is that our upcoming legislative meetings with Senator Blessing and Representative Miranda are occurring within the next week. So we have Senator Blessing tomorrow at 3:00 P. M. Representative Miranda next Monday at 9:00 A. M. Second item is House Bill 1. Now, this is the former House Bill 305, which is the Fair School Funding Plan. As you recall, they the House had passed that by a vote of 87 to 9 in December of last year, but then the year expires, so they come with a new bill. This is in response to the governor's proposed budget. This House Bill 1 builds on three years of feedback from from teachers, education professionals, and administrators that have been working with this with school funding every day of their lives. So there is hope that even from the governor himself, he acknowledged that he didn't include funding formula change because of all the great work that's been done. And there does seem to be bipartisan support for this. So the solution, if they do change the formula, will have less reliance on local property taxes and will be more of a payment system to the state, which then would distribute. So tomorrow, they're engaging in the governor's M B R, which is their budget, their proposed budget bill. And it's the only item on the agenda. So we expect to hear something very soon. Last thing I wanted to talk about was the O D E spring 2021 testing. State testing is required by both federal and state law, as we know. There has been no legislation enacted to change these legal requirements to this point. O D E reiterated the need to collect testing data during the pandemic to provide insight to trends and phenomena that can help inform the state policymaking and action. O D E reported that most districts in Ohio did administer the kindergarten readiness exam, the third grade reading diagnostic assessment in the fall and end of the course exams to high schoolers. And this data is also key to unlocking many pieces of the equity puzzle. I thought I'd share some key findings from the fall assessments. As far as test taking, the vast majority of eligible students that took the K R A, the kindergarten readiness assessment and third grade English language arts test. Most took it, but many of the state's most vulnerable students did not take it. Lower scores. Scores are generally lower across the state than past years, especially for blacks, Hispanics, and economically disadvantaged students. Remote education models. The decrease in the rate of fall third grade proficiency proficiency generally was more marked among students learning in districts using a fully remote education delivery model. And then equity implications. These preliminary data suggests that the state's most vulnerable students generally also have been the most affected. Local data should help tell a more nuanced story about these impacts and inform decisions about addressing the needs of each child. So it will be interesting when we engage in that conversation with our Sycamore specific data. And, you know, that's all I have.
I I will just reiterate on that last point. We are pulling our data as to what the board's request to do kind of a comparison face to face versus remote. So we're going to be prepared to share that the next week and certainly the one after that. And then certainly, building on what Mr. Mercurio said, we have been and will be ready for administration of the tests. You know, when, unless something changes, we've got our schedule. The teams have been working at the building at the district level, so we'll be ready.
The only thing I, I'm sorry about that. I forgot one here, is that there's no option to remotely administer the tests. So they're asking the districts get creative, use gyms or other spaces that haven't been used or something, but they're not going to do it remotely.
Yeah. So one of the things we'll need to talk about and bring back is the impact. You can think about it. You know, 16th student high school, based on that requirement, what that may mean in terms of their schedule for administering those tests. So we're, we're working through that. High school has some initial ideas. We're going to bring the the district offices to that, kind of make sure we can do that efficiently.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. I I can just add a couple of things. One is that the overall budget, which is more than just the state funding model, is House Bill 110. So that's one that we'll have to continue watching because a lot of times it contains many things that are not typically what you would think of as being budget items. So you know, for example, one of the items in there is that all students are required, all people, all students have a requirement for graduation to fill out the federal student aid form for for college. That's in the current House Bill 110. Who knows why, but it's there. So those are the kinds of things we'll have to continue to watch and continue to have discussions with our representatives to make sure they make sense and say there are things that that really shouldn't even be law in the end, but definitely shouldn't be in the budget bill. So just more, more things to watch beyond just House Bill, House Bill 1, which I think will eventually be both probably pulled again to House Bill 110.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. All right, moving on to Sycamore Advisory Commission report, Mr. Comenford.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. The advisory commission met last Monday, February 8th. We got our first project report. And the topic was enhancement of personal financial education. I thought it was an excellent report. I want to recognize the team that worked together to put that together, which was Alain Kerr, Nikhil Coley, Ashley Marinich. Nikhil Coley, Ashley Marinich, and Eric Ross. And I will also recognize the administrative contact that will work with this team, Kelly Wagner. I have shared the presentation with the board earlier today and look forward to having a series of great project engagements this spring. I was very impressed at the short time window and how well they tackled this, this topic. And kudos to the team and look forward to how we move forward next month. Next month's topic is remote learning beyond COVID. So also a very interesting topic.
Thank you, Mr. Commerfer. Moving on to student achievement. Just wanted to, Mr. Forstoppel mentioned some of the data that we will, we will be looking at as a board in terms of student achievement. And we heard an update from Mr. Mercurio about testing. And Mr. Evans and I have had the opportunity to have some listening sessions with some of our teaching staff who have shared with us some of the challenges that they have, they're facing with teaching students this year. And then also some bright spots of new ways that they're doing things and things that may, may want to continue into the next year. So we're kind of getting some information from all avenues. Also wanted to point out that Governor Dewine actually put out some information on the week of February 8th to look, to have districts starting to look at helping students making up for any lost learning due to the pandemic. And in his release, he says that plans may include extending the school year, beginning the new year early, extending the school day, summer programs, tutoring and remote options. And I know that we'll be considering some of those things as we move forward, as we get more information about what our students have experienced this year and where there may be some gaps. So that's all I have for student achievement. Strategic planning update. Mr. Forstoppel.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Yeah, we continue to work in concert with LEI, as we've shared with the board. We have identified year one prior, four year one priorities for the 2122 school year and those involve curriculum reporting team, data analysis, culture development and building leader support team. So right now, the composition of those leadership teams are being considered. And then after that, once we've determined what the composition of those teams are, we will then bring in LEI, who will work with those individual teams to develop really project statement development and measurables for each of those. We, we've roughed out a timeline between now and the end of the year and then even looking into the summer. Our idea would be is if we can keep this work of the project leader, leadership teams on track, we would bring to the board approval of those project statements and measurables in June. So, but we'll keep the board in the loop as we move forward with that, but that would be kind of the next threshold milestone. So the months of March and April will really be devoted to those teams working to develop those project statements and measurable outcomes for each of those those year one primaries. So good work.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Mercurio, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, just Mr. Forstoppel. I know you will keep me in the loop.
Yep.
Because these teams start to grow.
Yep.
All right, moving on to superintendent search update. I would just like to thank everyone in the community, both the school community, the community at large and our administration for completing, we had 444 surveys completed to give input to K-12, which is the consulting firm that we are using to help us find a new superintendent as well as 193 people who joined on focus, the Zoom focus groups with Mrs. Campbell. And just wanted to thank everyone for their input. We're continuing to develop our superintendent search profile. And in a few weeks, we will start to review specific candidate applications and resumes. The March 4 meeting schedule. The board.
Melissa, can I make one comment?
Absolutely.
On the superintendent search, Deb Campbell highlighted just how very much she appreciated and was impressed with your work to help do the coordination. And I just wanted to give you that affirmation. You weren't in the room, but they do a lot of searches and I think you stood out to them and I wanted you to know that.
They will be recruiting you shortly, I'm sure. All right, moving on to the March 4 meeting schedule. Just a reminder that the board will convene on the second and fourth Mondays in March to accommodate our superintendent search timelines as well as spring break. Meeting dates will be March 10th and March 24th. Okay, on to some other addendum items. I need a motion for the approval of a settlement agreement.
Sub move. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Commerfer.
Aye.
Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the resolution directing our superintendent to complete performance evaluations of administration.
Sub move.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
And Mr. Commerfer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with ORC.
Just, just one more comment and it's just building on the discussion on the listening sessions. Because I think we've actually completed eight listening sessions now across the community with the PTOs and the classified certified staff, teachers, admins, EAs, et cetera. And Mrs. Weiss and I just appreciate all the engagement from the staff and the PTOs in those discussions. The feedback's been distributed to the board. So people have a chance to review the comments and help inform our discussions as we keep going forward with those. But I think also just one of the pieces of feedback for everybody in the community is that we got a lot of positive feedback just on the, the video and the Zoom meetings through all those groups. And it seemed to be one more positive communication tools for them to stay informed in what's going on in the district where they can review the meetings and look at it into their own time and then get caught up on what's going on. So I'm not sure that was a complete surprise to us, but across every one of the different subgroups that we talked to, they like this communication tool. So just something to keep in mind that we get a lot of engagement and thank you, Mr. Fress, for keeping the technology working. There are a lot of eyeballs out there using this. So anyway, just wanted to say appreciate everyone supporting this.
We've had some experience dragging it out.
For bringing that up and closing the loop on that. Anyone else have any other issues before we move to go into executive session? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1 Employment Dismissal Evaluation Compensation Appointment and Discipline of a Public Employee Official or Regulated Individual in accordance with ORC 121.22G4 Negotiations and in accordance with ORC 121.22G2 Purchase of Property. We do not expect a vote after this executive session. I need a motion.
Sub move. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commerfer.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a nice evening.